Doing all right?
Yeah, pretty good. Pretty good.
How about you?
I think it's getting ready. All right, so we got about five or six, seven minutes.
I think, I think that thing's wrong.
I got nine oh one, that's what I got nine o'clock.
We gonna, we gonna get paid off that clock or all we all? Well, we'll. Let's give Willie a minute or two. We'll make it work. I don't carry no books like Marvin LaFite. You carry all his books when you come in here like Marvin LaFite. He take every one of his books on. I wouldn't have him.
You have a pencil?
Yeah, I had a pencil most of the time because they, they get you. I'm sorry I got this phone, but my wife sick. I ain't nobody there. I ain't worried about me. I'll call you back later. I stopped it.
We enjoy the music. We enjoy the music.
That's right.
You know, we gonna wait for Dr. Pires to go hit ya.
I was gonna get him a couple of minutes. You know, we, that's some of them, some of us, you know, have to give them a few minutes once in a while.
It takes them a little bit longer, longer to walk.
Well, it does. That's true too. And it takes me longer too.
Get me for a while.
I used to never did that. And I got a new leg.
I got a new hip now, I can move.
Yeah. That man told me they're giving me therapy and I went in there a while and he said, oh, I don't want to make you mad, but that still ain't gonna give. I said, I thank you. When I left, I was walking straight. And when I come in here, I was walking straight. It's been several years ago. He was, he was a nice little fellow. I said he was, he was John Paget's granddaughter's. You remember John? On the board.
Board for many years.
He's Mike's son. That Mike's a good person.
Yeah, was down that way this past weekend.
They all right people. Mike, Mike, good guy.
His sister, his sister is Lisa.
Joe Ed.
And not that, we got a man who passed away. This has been a couple of years ago.
I was surprised about that.
Yeah, I was too, because Manard always seemed like he was in pretty decent.
Later as well. I remember when he moved here.
I didn't remember when he moved here, but Lisa, of course, she was about a year, two years older than me. I bet she graduated maybe in seventy-six. Jim, she graduated here? Yep.
She was always sweetheart.
Yes, she's a nice girl.
Now, Manard had his own style.
I didn't know. He formed up there, you know.
Yeah.
Two thirty young.
That's any bird. Place next door to it. Mr. Braxton, Mo Braxton.
Oh, yeah.
Owned that thing and then that, that operated sunburn, you know, they took that place away from him. His son-in-law was a lawyer and and, you know, as a dude, they bullied their way anywhere they going back. You don't believe it, you have some demons with you another. I tell them that. I, I went through it.
That must have been many years ago.
For me, oh, oh, yeah, that was way back in the eighties. But when they did that with me, they, they forgot one thing. They forgot that the jury when I would decide in about thirty minutes, they did, I mean, God bless their heart. My heart wouldn't have taken much longer. They didn't have case against me.
Have you talked with Dr. Pires?
I spoke to him on Saturday.
He didn't say he was gonna be late or wasn't gonna be here? Well, we got, we got a schedule, let's go ahead and start it because we got several people coming in.
Coming in, yep.
You want to. Sheriff will be here twenty after.
All right. Hey, we don't say a word for our father.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our county. We thank you for the people worked on the budget and what we're doing to budget. Pray for us to make sure we go through and get everything balanced out like it needs to be. And in your name, amen.
Amen.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The ball red starts, I give everybody a fifty.
Ms. Westbrook.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you opening it up. And the agenda that we have that Lindsay prepared is the first, we'll start with Ms. Dunaway, the supervisor of elections. Sheriff Edinfield, Ms. Morris Hay, property appraiser, Mr. Rooks, and then Mr. Gilmore. So, just to kick it off though, I've got a couple of things if you're okay.
Sure.
Ms. Dunaway?
Yeah.
You know, first of all, I, I sure did want to thank after being here thirty days, Mr. Rook, Lindsay Dara, and Sarah Sun. Without their help, we probably wouldn't be sitting here this morning. The, with that being said, and having thanked the above, we have gone through the process and we do have a balanced budget. The budget book is in front of you for each commissioner. Take it home with you, read it all night if you want to. But the budget is based on using the current mileage rate of seven point nine four five and has a result of property value increase, which also increases the amount of abhorrent taxes. It will require that the county advertise the mileage rate as a tax increase, even though we are not changing the mileage rate. We're recommended the current mileage rate stay the same, but because it generates additional abhorrent taxes, by statute, we're required to advertise it as a tax increase, but we are not changing the mileage rate.
And real quick question, with the increased product values, how much does the, the existing mileage rate, how much more does it raise?
It generates roughly seven hundred thousand. Maybe a little bit more than that and Sarah or Lindsay can jump in if they want to. Total budget, total budget, including grants, including grants is a hundred and, right at about a hundred and forty-two million dollars. So remember, that includes the grants that we anticipate, anticipate getting CDVG, HMGP, RIF, and all that other good stuff. The only way to balance this budget this year is based on, the operational budget only, which has been requested by each department, is to include the carryover from this, the year that we're in right now of approximately one point five million dollars. So, that's what helped us balance budget is carrying over one point five million dollars. We believe there's gonna be more than that, but we'll talk about that in just a minute. Also, to balance the budget regarding the utility fund, it, the balance was accomplished by removing any contingency and reserves for the utility fund. So the utility fund is just a zero. It, it balances without any reserves, so if something happens drastically in the utility department, you don't have any reserves. And it also does not include any contingency. If you want to include reserve and contingency for the utility fund, you would have to take three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars away from general revenues and put it into your utility fund. So you're subsidizing the utility.
What's that three hundred and sixty-five based on? Is that a certain percentage of the?
It was the, basically, it was what was proposed in the utility fund budget. And, you know, I'm sure it's a percentage of, you know, the current budget, but.
There's nothing that says we gotta do, I mean, we want to create that reserve. We could create it at a hundred thousand or whatever we wanted to, there's nothing that mandates three sixty-five.
Okay. The, there's special requests we received and I'm sure, just like everybody else, they received requests from other outside entities, like Partners for Pets has requested ten thousand dollars. I'm recommending cut that in half to five thousand dollars. Jackson County EDC has requested the same that they did last year, two hundred and thirty thousand. I'm asking the commission to change it to two hundred and ten thousand. The Appalachian Regional Planning Council, we pay dues to the planning council. Those dues are twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. We have put those in the budget. Opportunity Florida dues, four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, we put those in the budget. The county, the Tri-County Airport has asked for over twenty-one thousand dollars. I'm asking the commission to fund that at two thousand dollars rather than twenty thousand. The Tri-County Community Council has asked for two thousand dollars, which I believe is exactly what they asked for last year. The Early Learning Coalition asked for an astronomical amount. We did not fund that last year, I'm not asking the commission to include that in the budget this year. The special projects, capital outlay expenditures, there's been a long list of requests and they're, they're in two categories. The TDC, the mosquito program, the Russ House, those have capital requests. But those funds are generated not from general revenue, not from our abhorrent taxes. They have their own reserve and monies come from outside of the general revenue. So we're gonna ask that the commission approve those today or whenever. But as far as capital improvements, capital outlay type items, special projects, we're, we're gonna ask the commission to wait until we get to the end of the fiscal year because we feel like there will be additional carryover dollars. We think it's gonna be a, a good number, a good bit more than five hundred, maybe, maybe five hundred. We're just not sure. But until we get to the end of the year, we wanna wait before y'all make a final decision on those special projects slash outlay item. So we would not make a decision on those until we get to the end of the fiscal.
Just, Jim, just to get kind of an idea of, if you took all of the requested capital improvement projects outside the TDC and what would that, if everything was funded, what would that number be?
It's about five point seven million.
That's, that is a wish list.
Sure.
Okay. There's additional carryover funds, we just talked about that. Now, in those carryover dollars that we're talking about, we're not including things like we committed, we have a match that we have to do for the backup generators that we're getting money from the state for or from the federal government. We're already carrying that money over, so it will not include things that we've already committed to. Generators is one of them. The fire trucks where the fire and rescue receive grants, AFG grants from the federal government. We have to have a match for that. We're, we've already plugged that into the boat, so that will not be a part of the special projects. And also the cottage sales from last year, we did not include that as part of the carryover money. We plugged that in as well. The raises extended to staff over the, in twenty twenty, May of twenty twenty-five, that added about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget, the operational budget. The cost of health insurance went up, that adds another four hundred plus thousand dollars to the, to this, to the budget that we're proposing. Most, all departments and Mr. Rook can jump in if he wants to. If you take all of them and average it out, you probably have about a ten to twelve percent increase overall by each department. And again, we're talking about just the operational salary and benefits and things that they need in order to continue to operate fuel and things of that nature. Most all departments, again, ten percent, but it does include the one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars a year for each employee that the commission approved a few years ago. So we did plug that into the budget. Now, two or three things to run by you real quick. You know, if we wanted to reduce that one point five million dollars that we're relying on as far as carryover, these are some things that I would want you to tell me if you want to implement or not, not implement. Currently, the county does what they call a health reimbursement account card, a credit card that goes to each employee. Some of them, depending on if they have family coverage or if they work for the county, it varies a little bit, but on average, those cards cost the, about fifteen hundred dollars per person, adds just over four hundred thousand dollars to the budget. The one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollar raise, and that's for everybody. Remember, at the jail and the sheriff's department, the state sent additional dollars for increases in salary? Well, that includes all those staff people getting the one thousand, six hundred and fifty as well as the staff that got the two dollar rate, two dollar hour raise. Now, if you reduce that raise amount to cover just the people that didn't, really didn't get anything, for lack of a better way to say it, it would cost, you would, could reduce your costs by three hundred and twenty-seven, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Explain that again.
You know, the, the county has historically given every staff, whether they work for the sheriff's department, supervisor of elections, wherever they work, one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollar increase instead of a three percent raise. If you, now, in the, in May, the commission agreed to a two dollar increase per hour to help retain employees. What the jail and the sheriff's department, FDLE, state legislature, increase the amount of money that they get to increase the salaries for sworn officers. That, that money that they received incorporated an increase in those salaries. So if you didn't include the one thousand, six hundred and fifty for all those people that got two dollars an hour and the legislative additional dollars for sworn officer, you just did the employees, yeah, then it would cost you somewhere around, you would reduce that down to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
But the budget that you have balanced includes everyone.
Yes, sir, it sure does. That's exactly right. Now, there's five, according to staff, there's five people that are below the statutory requirement for minimum wage. This coming October requires us to go to fourteen dollars an hour. And so there's five of those that we have to do raises for in order to meet the mandatory minimum wage of fourteen dollars an hour come Oc- October the first. So those are some things that I'm asking you to think about.
We have only five, that's less than fifteen?
Less than fourteen. And we have to go to fourteen October the first, twenty twenty-five.
I thought we didn't get to fifteen.
That's October of twenty twenty-six is when we have to get fifteen. But I, I rambled quite a bit and I know Ms. Dunaway has been waiting patiently for me to shut up. So, any questions, commissioners, before?
Yeah, I have a question also, Mr. Dunaway, if you'll excuse me and everybody else in here not being able to talk very well, but if my phone rings, I apologize, I kept it open. My wife's very ill at home. So if there's a reason for that, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll take my punishment when y'all ready to give it them. Anyway, do have one question. We were talking about utilities a while ago. Have we made any move on collecting the two big huge amounts that we're out of sorts of?
As I'm sitting here today, I have not done that. But we do, I do have something that we're getting ready to send out in demand papers.
This is on utility payments for those new customers that are suffering.
And since you're new enough, we'll stack, they'll count you that way, we won't hold out again.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? I see a few people that walked in, anybody want to speak at any time? Y'all just visitors and we glad to have you.
Good morning, commissioners. Here to present our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Not, I think Mr. Dean maybe answered a question I had about a couple of capital outlay expenses that I had on my proposed budget that did not make it into this budget that's in this book. And is that correct, Mr. Dean, that maybe we're holding off? So I do, I do want to be able to address because one of those items is something that was brought up in a statutory change. House Bill twelve oh five was put into place July one, and that is citizens initiative petitions. Somebody wants to get something on the ballot, they ask citizen voters to sign a petition. Our role in that is we have to verify those petitions. In the past, the only time we had to send a letter is when there was suspected fraud. Signatures didn't match, yes, sir.
Unfunded mandate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and I'm requesting nine thousand dollars for a scanner for that unfunded mandate, yes, sir.
How much, Carol?
Nine thousand dollars, and that's one item, that's the high-speed scanner. We absolutely need that to be able to process these petitions because we get thousands of them. And now, instead of one page, it's five pages. We have to scan all those petitions and send them to the Division of Elections at the Florida Department of State.
And that came on this year's legislation?
Yes, sir, it did. House Bill twelve oh five. The other was a high-speed tabulator. Those that have helped us with vote by mail know how long it takes to process vote by mail in our scanners. So, high-speed tabulator, requesting that as well, that was sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, plus the maintenance fee on that, so the total was seventy-seven thousand. In regards to my budget, where I have increases certainly is in computer support. Every year I come, that's where one of my increases is because subscriptions go up. Everything that is in that category is subscription-based, based on services, equipment maintenance. This year, if you remember, our website in the election year, on election night, struggled both in the primary and in the general. As a result of that, our vendor decided to get out of the website business and gave us this year to find another website vendor. And I took three requests for proposals on it and went with the one that many other small counties went with. There are ten other counties that went with ELEC innovations and they are in the process of revamping our website or rebuilding our website and will be releasing that the first full week of August. So, that was an unexpected expense, but I think I'm gonna be able to bear that in this year's budget. But that is why that computer support has gone up for that reason. Did you have any questions about the budget that I presented? I won't bore you with line by line, but.
Communication and postage line out of one twenty-four, twenty-four, forty-five, thirteen. I guess that's four ten, went up to twenty thousand.
We have a, we have one election in this budget cycle and so that accounts for the vote by mail.
You're not asking for any overtime?
I did thought that I had overtime wages in there, but I didn't, I wasn't able to plug in the salaries. That's not, that's something that is done here in-house, board of county commissioners. But I'll have Lindsay look at that, but yes, there would be some overtime for the election process. Some of my staff in the past have taken comp hours instead of overtime and we've gone back and forth between that. But now that there's no tax on overtime, they may choose overtime. Any other questions?
And you said the nine, the nine thousand dollar, obviously it's not in here, but that's something that's gonna be.
It is, something that is absolutely necessary. And the other item, it would be fantastic and it would make processing vote by mail be cut down to one day. Instead of, when we start processing vote by mail, we start a week prior to election day. Mr. Crutchfield has been there, Mr. Rooks has been there, he knows how long it takes to process each one of those ballots, feeding them in. We have to hire part-time people to come in and help us feed those ballots because we typically get around six thousand, excuse me, six thousand vote by mail ballots that we have to process, so. Any other thoughts, questions, or concerns? I appreciate your consideration. And before you vote on those capital outlay, I'd love to come back and remind you of why I need it, okay?
That was the scanner and the tablet.
Yes, sir.
We thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Also thank you for, you have some very good employees there.
I do.
We're, we're all appreciative of them sometime or other.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it this morning.
You wanna call the high sheriff next, that's right.
Morning, morning, chair, commissioners. So, this morning I have two. I got the nine-one-one budget as well as the sheriff's office. I'll do the nine-one-one first. So our E-nine-one-one budget, basically, the, all the funding comes from the state and it passes through you guys as a pass-through to us. And, but it's broken down into personnel services eighty-seven, one eighty-three, and then operating expense of one fifty-two, one one seven. Total budget, two thirty-nine, three hundred. We do, our nine-one-one director, Mr. Dan Warren, does apply and we receive several grants because we couldn't do what we do with, with two hundred and thirty-nine, all the stuff we had to keep up. So, we're grateful for all of that, but it's, this one's a pretty, pretty simple cut and dry.
I think it's the nine-one-one.
Which one, twenty-five?
Which budget?
One twenty-five.
We all, we're ready, Mr. Chair.
So y'all, y'all are good with the nine-one-one? Any questions?
The spring, spring maintenance line out, what, what is that? It's one oh seven, eight ninety-three?
Is any of the security, cybersecurity involved in it?
So ready to proceed? Okay. All right, the next one up is our Jackson County Sheriff's Office budget. The first one on the, the top line is Personnel Services, which is roughly seventy-five percent of our budget, is five million, two-hundred-ninety-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four. Operating expense, one million, five-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine. Capital outlay, two-hundred-and-fifty, for a total of seven million, forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and eight cents. And you'll also see on there our Jackson County School Board contract. So our school board funds total one-hundred percent of our S R D. There's thirteen deputies, we were able to reduce that by a couple this year because they combined some campuses. Again, the school board pays for their fuel, their everything. And then you'll see down bottom, the last line before the total is our F D L A grant that we received from the state for sworn. And it's one million, four-hundred-ninety-three thousand, four-hundred and eight. So for a total, that totals out nine point four-nine-four. You will see in my, in the Personnel Services, an increase of five hundred and nineteen thousand. A portion of that is due to this proposed sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-dollar raise. I did not include the seventy sworn in that because of the twenty-two-hundred they just got from, we just got from F D L A, from the state. It also includes an increase in benefits mandated by the state, retirement. Since I've taken office, that number's gone up by eleven percent. That's something that none of us in this room have control over. That's substantial increase. But also, you're going to see in there four additional sworn positions at the cost of seventy-five thousand each for salary and benefits. So the Jackson County Sheriff's Office has not received, the last we could track, that they received additional sworn positions for, to cover the, the calls in this county was over forty years ago. The number of calls just in the last five years has almost doubled. We answer over forty thousand calls a year. So each, each day is about a hundred and ten calls. There is a deputy covering two-hundred-and-fifty square miles today. That's if everybody's at work, nobody's out on workers' comp or sick or military leave. And a large number of the, the increase can be attributed to the mental health crisis and the drug and alcohol addiction. We've also had some of our municipalities within the, within the county due to budgetary restraints, downsize their law enforcement agencies. And those municipalities aren't required by the Constitution to answer calls. You know, that's, that's a, a plus if we have a police department. But we, as the Sheriff's Office, are required by the Constitution to respond to those calls. So when those agencies downsize and we, we, we take up the slack. An example, Sneed's has just recently reduced their numbers, and we're covering Sneed's today for approximately twelve hours. So we're taking this added calls. It's needed, it's reasonable, and it's definitely necessary. I wouldn't ask for it if we didn't need it. Oftentimes, you'll find me on a weekend, I'll escorting funerals all over this county. So not that that bothers me, that's my job, and I do it with pride. But our operating expense increase, a portion of that is due to the I T, like Ms. Dunaway spoke about earlier, the licensing, the stuff that goes up regularly, annually, by three to five percent. And also a one-time investment for those four deputies, computers, the, the equipment that would require them to be able to do their job. And some of this, the increase on the operating expense is the cybersecurity, which is required by statute. We contract with Inspired Technologies to do our I T services. And we don't always agree on, on the, the statute and how we interpret it as far as twenty-four-hour coverage. But I, this, this will put us in compliance, I feel certain. The capital outlay remains the same, but that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, the two-hundred thousand is for vehicles. It's, that's been the number for a while. Obviously, if you have seventy sworn deputies, they all got a vehicle.
And you said two-hundred, two-hundred out of that two-fifty is for vehicles?
Yes, sir. And the other, the fifty is for keeping our infrastructure updated as far as our servers, our computer servers go. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff at the Sheriff's Office, because again, we handle the nine-one-one, the dispatch. So there's a lot of equipment there that we have to continually stay on top of updating. So with that being said, I'll take any questions.
Out of the, out of the, the increased number of calls that you're having annually, you said a portion of that was from municipal police forces, police departments being downsized, would you guess ten percent?
It'd be hard to put a number, but for instance, today from three A M. to two P M., any call that comes from the city of Sneed's is ours. And, and so Cottondale, we'll, we'll take some of their calls, it's usually at night. The chief was out recently with some medical issues, but he's back. They handle most of theirs, but a lot of times at night, we will, we'll answer the calls.
Thank you.
And again, forty years, you imagine the increase in the number of calls and what's required. And not only that, but like mandatory training. So we have, we don't have a training budget, we might do with, with our own staff, we, we do our own training, most of it. But there's mandatory training these guys have to have, and I can't afford to pull them in on their day of work to conduct this training. They have to do it on their day off, so recently, we did a two-day training out at the airport, and that required those fourteen deputies that went to that training were seven straight days, or seventy-six hours that week. So it's definitely needed, if it, if it wasn't, I wouldn't ask for it, I can assure you of that.
Does F D L A provide some of that training?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I appreciate you guys.
Even if you train with your own people, they still have to be certified through F D L A to do the trains?
Yes, sir. We have probably thirty of our sworn staff are certified instructors, including myself. Like today, we've, we have firearms training this week out at the Chaposa Fire and Range. So we have a number of our staff that are trainers. And so I don't have to come up here and ask you for a fifty thousand dollar training budget, we do it ourselves. And, and we have some good partners out there, Houston County Sheriff Donald Valenza, he comes down and brings his staff and, and does some stuff for us that we normally wouldn't be able to do, that would cost us. And we also have Mr. Charlie Strickland on our reserve unit. That's an amazing instructor, and, and he's very, very talented and high skill set. He provides a lot as well, at no cost.
Local boy.
Yes, sir.
Yes, very.
Sheriff, Sheriff, I see that the office, office of supplies, patrol equipment, man, that's jumped up about fifty thousand dollars a year. It went from, it looks like it's listed at one forty-seven, nine forty. It's been hovering around ninety-five thousand.
That's that equipment for those, those four new.
New units?
That would be a one-time, not reoccurring.
Makes sense.
I thought so, but I was gonna, I was gonna check with my accountant before I spoke.
Any other question by anybody?
No.
All right.
Appreciate you, gentlemen.
Maybe if you can go ahead and start that firearm training. Thank you.
See, Ms. Rebecca.
Yes, eh?
Y'all ready, I'm ready.
We thought you was coming with a wheelbarrow for the money.
Oh heavens, no. I thought y'all was gonna give me.
The wheelbarrow just doesn't have any money in it.
Just a wheelbarrow, you're right.
Thank you, Carmen.
Well, I just decided, I told my chief deputy, I said, let's, let's go on over and maybe we'll be able to come on and do this early. So, so good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Is there a page I need to turn to in this book? You want that page here?
Everybody got anything for, because I start. All right, that's your pledge.
Page ten. So anyway, good morning again. So as you see by my budget, that Department of Revenue has cut a position for me. So, but it's the position that has been vacant for the last couple of years. And so they decided that it was time to cut it. And that if, for some reason, that the economy started booming and we needed more help with field work, then I could go back to them and request it again, but I don't see that happening in the next year. So I said, you know, go ahead, cut it, I mean, that way it's out of there for now at least. So that took out about, about forty thousand dollars anyway with retirement and everything, so. But the actual position was about thirty-five, eight. So the, the temporary position that I had last year, we've done away with because our, our temporary was just our G I S person that had came in to train a staff member on what to do and how to do our deeds and to know how things are done, and then once we got her trained, then he left, so we didn't have him no more. I'm not real sure exactly what all you have questions on. So I'll give y'all a minute, and if y'all have a question for me.
Yes, ma'am, I have one. Month or so ago, I got a letter from you. And I, I hope you got a copy of it, because it's on my desk, and I wanted to share it. There was an estimated one balance, but it, the numbers didn't quite match up with the, with the commas on it. So I wanted you to show that to us.
I don't have that with me, so.
I have a record in file.
I do, I do, I'm assuming we're discussing the estimated budget or the, maybe the.
Estimated revenue.
Right, that would have been the, the one that went out July one for the certification of the tax roll. Okay, so that would be, yeah, that would be something that I would have to, to get from the office and discuss with you.
How that, would you share that? Mr. Dean, when you.
I can, I can, I can get it and come back.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
I, I can walk over and pick it up.
That'd be fine, and then if you've got any questions, you can ask me while I'm right there at the office and got access to everything. Okay?
And that's the TRIM notice?
That would be the certification that we have to give to all the municipalities as of July one by statute, so that we can, you know, get everything prepared for the TRIMS, so that you can prepare for the, you know, TRIMS and the millages and everything, so. Okay?
I'll pick that up and switch through.
Okay.
Yeah, looks pretty clear.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate y'all.
I guess one question was, is the position that's not been funded by the Department of Revenue, that's not been filled for several years now, I mean, is that not, is that position remained unfilled for what, last three or four years?
I would say the last three at the most.
And that's primarily because it just has not been needed?
Well, no, no.
Didn't find anybody.
Couldn't find anybody, and it's been a chore to even find one to replace the one I had. So, I mean, I've had one leave, and so I've been able to locate somebody. And of course, training, it takes six months at least to train somebody, and then even after that, they're still training.
You know, I, I'm assuming that you don't necessarily agree with the Department of Revenue's decision to, to, to not fund that position?
Well, I can't necessarily say I don't agree, but, you know, I can understand their point of it's not been filled, and.
But there again, it's not been filled, not because it's not been needed, it's been filled because you've not been able to find it.
Right, and they knew that, we had discussed it, you know, so they, they were aware that we couldn't find anybody, so.
And I guess you've been able to, to operate effectively without it.
We have, especially having the new camera system that we have now. It's been a better system where we can have our tablets and the guys can work better in the field and have more knowledge of what and where to go and not backtracking.
More efficient, their routing.
Correct.
We thank you, ma'am, very much.
Well, we thank y'all.
We'll excuse you if you'd like to be. Not that you have to be.
Well, I'll go pull out the form and see exactly what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
I guess take the wheelbarrow back with you.
Yeah, you know.
I'll come by and pick that up in a second.
That'd be fine, that'd be fine, I'll be, I've got an appointment between one and two, so after two, you know, two, two-thirty issue preferably, so. Okay, appreciate y'all, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Honorable Mr. Brooks.
I'm gonna sit right here unless y'all want me to get up there.
I will, I.
I'm gonna put us, I'm gonna put us ahead of schedule. My increase that I have that's showing here is due to the sixteen fifty for each one of my employees, the associated back in Medicare, the increase in retirement and health insurance. Now, health insurance, we always try to get that back to you guys based on what the state lets me, for those employees. Let's charge them for the health, so my increase though is, is based on the sixteen fifty.
How much did the health insurance go up per employee, isn't it?
Golly, for the employee cost or the county's portion?
Both.
The employee cost for married couples about forty, forty-five dollars a month.
Increase?
Pardon me?
Increase?
Increase, and then the increase for the health insurance overall, Lindsay, help me out, it's.
It was like eleven, eleven percent or a little bit under eleven percent.
So it, it, it would have been, it's about.
Hundred dollars a month per employee?
Yeah, about. For what the counties have to pay, about a hundred and twenty bucks a month.
It went up. Those eleven percent, plus two.
Pretty clean.
I mean, that, that, that's my increase, I'm not asking for any more. We get, we also get for Article Five, we, we get Article Five. It's basically for computer costs. The years that I have to use it, I use it, if I don't use it, you know, you guys get to keep it, but we've had to use it more and more. I mean, that's, that's, as the other constitutions that told you, it's just, computer costs are going up and up. And when the legislature wrote this, it was in two thousand three, two, somewhere along in there, and computer costs weren't. three, two, somewhere along in there, and computer costs weren't as much then. And they said, alright, the county's gonna take care of the computer costs and, and we'll take over uh, the clerk's offices and the court, the court system. Well, it sounded like a good deal then, um, but you know, everything we maintain now is on the computer. We have no more paper files. When, when I was buying forty thousand dollars a year of paper files, I was getting the charge of that to the court side. Now, instead of paper files, I'm using the computer and we can't charge it to the court side. So. And, and that's something when we, we get off to that they, they really look at. I mean, they, they've gone so far is to disallow copier costs on court side.
You're gonna take that out of your budget.
I was trying to call nine-one-one.
But, but you know, the copier cost, uh, it, they're saying that if it's uh, and most of them have fax machines built in, so they say their communications equipment, they disallow copier costs. They're pretty stringent on that.
Have you had any uh, uh, unfilled positions that you've not been able to fill or are you in pretty good shape right now?
You know, um, we were talking about this the other day. I'm in, I've got one position right now that, that's open. But when I started with the clerk's office, we had thirty-nine point eight FTEs. That was in two thousand five. We now are down to twenty-nine. So our office has shrank and it's because of the computers. You know, we don't, we don't punch holes and everything now and put it in the file folder. So I don't need those, those type of employees. Employees I need now need to be able to work on computers. And, and so I, I, we've transitioned, you know, uh, thank goodness, you know, a lot of our old time employees have learned how to use the computer. But I, you know, I need a different, I, I need a different type of employee now. And part of, you know, what we're running into is, is like everything else, is the cost. You know, the type of employee I need that has to deal with, I'm asking to deal with attorneys. And, and I'm gonna say something, I don't mean this derogatory, but judges, you know, helping people. My last three employees, I hired a hunger highways employee, a Chick-fil-A employee, and a daycare worker. And, and, and we had to train them how to do the things we asked them to do. And, and I've lost a lot of employees in probably six, six or eight in the last two years. We get them trained, guess who comes and gets them? You know, attorneys look for them, because we're trying to do a good job of hiring someone that's got potential to learn and we encourage them to go back to school. Uh, but we also get on that court administration deals from me. We've had two that go to the probation department, uh, because I'm asking them to do a tremendous, I mean, a lot of stuff. Where they can look across the hall and say, hmm, I can go over there, make the same money or instead of insurance costing four hundred and eighty dollars a month and go with the state, it's two hundred dollars a month. So, you know, that's what we're, we're paying. And it's not just my offices, all the clerks statewide. But uh, you know, court administration has grown and they, you know, they've got three or four of our former clerk employees. They can pay them better. They, they offer working from home. You know, same, same problems that, that uh, county admins facing. You know, it's hard, it's hard for me to ask them to come five days a week when they go to work for court administration and stay home two days a week, work from home. So, you know.
The position.
I wanna sit here and whine.
Yeah, position that's unfilled and feel like it's a necessary position or?
It, it's an entry level position, but it doesn't, the only thing it's costing you all is a sixteen fifty. It's a, it's a court related position. So it's not a uh.
Doesn't impact your budget?
It's not impacting this budget at all. It's a, it's a court. And, and to be honest, the reason we shrank some of our positions, we cannibalized them. Uh, you know, I've eaten those positions up and given that money so I can keep my employees. But I mean, that, that's it. I try to keep it as lean as I can and I always try to give you all a little money back in the end.
We appreciate it. We certainly use it. But I'll probably get to keep the lights on.
That's right.
Anybody got any other question? Alright, Mr. Gilmore, come around and follow and get in that chair right there. Turn that mic up, we'll be here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Test, test. So thank you for your support and uh, do you have all, you have the budget information before you?
Commissioners, if you can flip to the tab that says outside funding requests and then go four pages back, the information's there.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Looking for it. There it is. Bring it down on Lindsay.
What page, y'all?
There, I was in that screen tab, Mr. Green, about four pages back. That's that outside. Right behind you.
That is about here, so. Alright, to go down here unless you have something.
No, sir, I'm good.
Yes, sir. So, if you look at our budget plan, twenty-five, twenty-six, public budget totals out to two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight twenty-seven. That, under a quarter of a million uh, budget we hope to change in the next couple of years. I told Mr. Donna Fro and Mr. uh, Westbrook that'd like to double it in the next couple of years, meaning, you know, if you see the ROI, then you'll want to double it. But this will be the third year in a row that we've asked for the same dollar amount from the county. Like Clay, we were a little conservative this year, so we have some leftover, but we are looking at a very active year. We're looking at a very positive year. I was looking at some of the notes here, but um, you know, we've been very proud of the couple of big projects we talked about that are out in the Unimac building and the old Russell building. And the absorption that comes from that, getting people in those buildings is important. And um, we've been working really close with um, Pulse and Project Pulse. And University of Florida have worked together and we're trying to work on some peanut producing options. We're even discussing some options around other uh, fruits and vegetables that might be able to broaden our market opportunities for our producers locally. Got a lot of activity going on in healthcare. We're trying to keep the ball mov- moving in all the sectors, whether it be education, whether it be healthcare, whether it be affordable housing uh, with Lennar uh, coming up here in uh, uh, next week actually. And so, uh, we feel like we have, have been able to move the ball down the field some on these things and you know, we've got, our board meeting next week is located at Pac-X USA. That building is, is Project Bristol. So we're encouraged about that. We see good action there. So, I didn't know what all you may want to ask about directly. You can see here, we did shuffle some money because it depended on which conferences and which uh, out of town exhibit type uh, programs that I went to. I went to several that were, were out of state, but we shuffled some of that in terms of our training and consultant spending. But just kinda as a, as an indicator, like if we wanted to brush up the mega site data, you know, we have an option to purchase the mega site. You all know that, that's the twenty-one hundred and forty-seven acres, I believe it is. It's under twenty-two hundred acres up in east of Campbellton. If we wanted to get a firm to really brush that up and talk about the current cost of utilities, the current cost uh, to bring that into compliance where we could recruit somebody, some of that cost is thirty to fifty thousand dollars to get a solid uh, proposal together. So, when we're saving, uh, it takes a lot of saving in order to fund up some promotional materials, what I would call promotional materials, marketing materials, but to try to get these proposal level documents there to say, hey, come here. And um, so that's kinda part of why we want to move toward a, a higher budget over the next couple of years. Just to make ourselves better known and more uh, data about the cost it will take to bring in the infrastructure and get the, the place up to speed. Uh, but we've had probably roughly one and a half proposals per month this year. That we've been engaged in, whether it's uh, some from Florida Commerce, some from uh, Florida's Great Northwest. They've been a, a great partner, our regional economic development partner and Opportunity Florida. So, Opportunity Florida, in fact, uh, next week on July thirty-first, Alex Kelly will be here. Our Secretary of Commerce will be here. He will be visiting a couple of places uh, in, some in Calhoun County, but a couple of places in our county. He'll be at Rex Lumber and then he'll finish up um, out at Pulse Industries. And he will uh, observe where we are with the RIF grant that they awarded us, you know, the one point seven million dollar roughly grant to help rehab that building. And he'll be uh, congratulating us for that. And uh, we're gonna keep the state involved as closely as we can on all the things we're doing because we have more grants. We want possibly another solar field uh, out in that region because the level of power that's gonna be used, you know, power is a problem. And uh, we're gonna have to have some means of offsetting some of their power bills. And uh, if we can find a way to help with grants or such, you will hear some of that. If we can find a, a way to recruit retail, we actually got some proposals in recruit, recruit retail. Uh, to go after someone like a, like a Publix, like a TJ Maxx, like another. If we do that, those, some of those activities may cost twenty, twenty-five thousand up to thirty-five, forty thousand to actively spend a year recruiting retailers. So those, those support mechanisms cost. So I'm just giving you some understanding of what we're thinking in that area and then it's subject to how we want to move forward. But we feel like it's been a good year, a good momentum. We want to do more advertising and more uh, promotional.
Darren, there was a feasibility study done several years ago for that mega site to get water, sewer and gas to that site. I don't know if you've been able to get it, get your hands on it or not.
Oh yeah, it's from twenty-seventeen. It's far outdated now. The cost of definitely changed. But it's from twenty-seventeen. Yes, sir, I do have that. Like for example, rail to go there showing at about six million dollars. And uh, my contacts through CXS and all said you can double that. Be twelve million dollars to extend rail uh, down there for the, this, so just as a feeler, but yes, sir, I do have that data.
Oh, and I know that I just read a strategic plan that was developed by TDC and you talked about the marketing retail in the area. I know one of the big things that came about as a result of that was additional restaurants in Jackson County. Are you, do you work closely with Kelsey and, and kind of coordinate uh, those type of marketing activities as well?
We're working with her. We don't, we don't work as closely as maybe we could, but we definitely work with Kelsey. And of course, we've, we've talked about and considered a shared uh, employee in that respect. Because as it relates to the marketing piece, uh, you know, and, and particularly retail, there's a lot of synergy for what we're doing. So, yes, we definitely work well with Kelsey.
I know our uh, uh, I know our uh, primary objective today is talk about the budget, but can you, you mentioned Pulse and I, I, I know that I met the contractor not too long ago with you. Is that, uh, is that con, is that construction uh, and rehab for that facility ongoing now?
Uh, it's, it's just now commencing.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. There's already been activity. I mean, they've moved machine tools in there. They've moved some of their operations in there uh, as far as the private company did, but the city's RIF grant should be commencing this month.
Would they anticipate that maybe being operational? Got any idea?
Well, it's, like I say, they're making parts in there now, but I think by the time this, I think they believe the RIF grant only be three months or so.
I heard, I heard you mention agriculture that. Jackson County, Florida has more different products for agriculture than any county in the state of Florida. We also have the largest FSA office in the state of Florida. Who is hard to work with. They're very difficult. Just about every farmer that we hail struggles to work with FSA because there's so, there's so many steps of it. So anytime that you're uh, in contact with anybody with FSA, uh, there, these, these agriculture people always need help. And we have some very good land in this county. We have some very poor land. This county is part of crops and, of road crops and that sort of thing, but cattle has, has always been strong. But I would say that the more that we can promote agriculture from this spot of ours that, that belongs to all of us, the better off we'll be. We uh, we do not have a good relationship with FSA for the most part. Uh, they're difficult and, and it's no, there's no uh, no, no, nowhere do I see it increasing, getting better until we have, now a lot of that comes from Gainesville. It all, it all don't come from Ben Avenue. But I assure everyone in this room that it's, it's a struggle every day when someone, that they, they're the one that puts out the rules, they're the one that puts out the proposals. But do a farmer just takes them and works with them? But they're very difficult. And always be mindful of that. But what God is here is gonna keep us here a lot of times. And agriculture is certainly a way alive for a lot of us people. And I know in my business that some, I have a cross-section of different things, but agriculture still stays put. So, nobody ever really knows that or realizes it because they don't come in contact, but we're trying to begin a process now that we started a long time ago and that's deal with, with Congress, United States Senate and the United States House. And it's just very hard. They'll, they'll tell you they're gonna do something for you. And, and I'm a good example. Right now, they gave us a chance to clean up after that hurricane that we had or tornado, what you wanna call it, back six, eight months ago. They had us to clean it up and pile it up. But they still not give us okay to burn it. And it's popped out there in your field where the, where the ag man is trying to grow something. And it just, it's, it's just has no, has no bottom to it, I guess, is what I would say. But remember that always. If you got a friend anywhere, the city of the United States Congress, United States Senate. The agriculture in this county needs help.
I'd like to continue that conversation where you can keep, keep learning and growing in that area. I feel like uh, the Rural Renaissance Bill, which.
Oh, it would have happened ten times.
It should have happened and we, we went over there for every single senate committee hearing. We went to the, the one representative uh, committee hearing and support, waived in support. We, we threw everything we knew to throw at it. And I was disappointed that that two hundred million or so failed, but to your point, I think right now we're, we're beginning to learn more about producers and value added ag. And I think there's a, I think there's an opportunity to change the panhandle in terms of import and export opportunities.
Jackson County, Florida is the third largest growing peanut county in the United States of America. Jackson County, Florida is the third largest growing peanut county in the United States of America. Not many people realize that, but Henry County, Alabama, number one, a county in Oklahoma, number two, that's number three.
That's a strong position.
And just, just speaking up, making my mind and it's, uh, that they're, they're a challenge. And I'm not sure that our representative congresspeople have ever lived a way of life that people in South Alabama, South Georgia or North Florida live that are with agriculture. And it's hard to get it across to them when they want to have. It's hard to get it across to them of what we need and what we have to have. But certainly, anybody ever thinks about that, you may have a buddy you went to school with, have gone to school with or whatever and you never know, the next person that pops up might be somebody that's close to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Darwin, real quick question. Uh, last year we funded, uh, funded, uh, your organization for two hundred and ten thousand dollars and I noticed fourteen thousand came from municipalities. How's that broken? Do, do all the municipalities give a little bit or?
No, sir. They, they have the right to request a waiver if they're physically constrained and so, uh, but those that can do and, and this year, a couple, a few more municipalities did get on board for small amounts, but still Cottondale offered these people sometimes have not been able to contribute, but they have this year.
What about your private investment, investors? You still expect the same numbers last year?
Yes, sir. We do and a little, maybe a little more. Yes, sir. We, we're recruiting some people in healthcare field to get involved. They want to be a participant in economic development. They say they are and a driver. And so we're recruiting them to get on board financially and support the process.
Would you say healthcare, local positions?
Local hospital and clinic, but also Florida Blue. Florida Blue is the number one payer in the state for all healthcare related services. We told them, well, if y'all are involved at that level, why don't y'all come support us financially? And they are considering it.
That'd be good.
Oh, I think that all you got?
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
No, we thank you for coming. Yeah. We're attentive to what you say. We'll go from there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Westbrook, that's the, the last presenter. Um, a couple of quick things, uh, for the commission. Uh, we, for, uh, tomorrow, we have asked, uh, our major departments that make up the lion's share, other than the sheriff, like fire rescue, road and bridge and jail, to be here after the commission meeting, uh, in case the actor y'all take this home and read it all night tonight. You may have some questions and, uh, they would be available to answer any questions you might have, uh, you know, especially road and bridge. Uh, but, uh, the budget books, I know you know this, but take them with you, uh, take them home. Uh, then for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, unless y'all have some specific questions, we just will not, we don't have anything for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, but we do have, uh, we get advertised for a budget hearing, uh, if, if you want to meet Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But, uh, just letting you know that tomorrow we do have the commission meeting. And there's one item on there that I kinda wanted to run by you because I need to know if I need to go get an application tonight to her. Uh, there's a, the advisory board, the value adjustment, uh, board. Uh, we have a, uh, someone that would like to participate, but the commission has indicated that they want an application from anybody that wants to participate on the board. Uh, Ms. Pate has agreed to it, uh, participate. Uh, I don't know if you remember Mr. Danny Pate, uh, his wife has agreed to participate, but she has not completed an application. Uh, do you, Mr. Chairman, would you want me to get her to fill out an application tonight so that we have it available or would the commission consider just, uh, approving it?
Well, I don't know if it's clear to the board, if everybody might, I already know her from a lot for a long time, the court reporter.
I, I, one thing and, and the reason this is, is, uh, kinda imperative that we do it now, normally we, we don't have the value adjustment board meetings until October. But, uh, we need to meet real quick. There's a couple of things that have come up. The application fee, uh, the statute has changed. It used to be fifteen dollars for years. It's now fifty dollars just to apply. So we need to have that voted on by the board and there's one other housekeeping thing too. I, I can't remember.
So two meetings, Mr.?
No, no, it'd be, be one meeting, uh.
What is?
And, and Ms. Martha's contract, our, our attorney that we use. So there's, there's two things that'll be the meeting at the meeting and we just need to have that individual person. That's a required member of the board that has to be at the meeting. So we're gonna hold the meeting July the thirtieth, uh, and so kind of need, we need to have a member. So if we can hold the meeting, not saying that you had to have this paid or but, but we do need one, a person by July thirtieth and, uh.
I'll have, I'll have a name for you as well for that, but that's fine.
Yeah, but we, we just need to make a decision.
We only need one?
We only need one. We only need one, but we do need to make a decision as soon as possible so they can be available.
We make that decision tomorrow. Will that work?
Yeah, that'll work. Uh, just, just.
I know, I know Ms. Pate. She actually is, and I have her mind. She serves on a couple of things. She served on the City of Maryland Planning and Zoning Committee for a long time.
I know.
Good, good.
I knew her dad and her mom and her sister and her brothers, all of them.
That's, that's all I have, Mr. Westbrook.
All right, any board member, anything?
Just a clarification. You said that if every one of the capital improvement items are on the wish list, if every one of those were approved, it would be five point seven million dollars, is what you said.
Yes, sir. And if you look back behind the special projects tab, there's a spreadsheet there with all of them listed. And you can see that total number on the last page.
In the first two pages, Lindsay.
Five point three million, sorry.
First two pages or?
The, the ones that are funded outside of general revenue. So it's like PDC money and what is it, the first two pages?
It's the first one, the first page of it.
Just the first page. So anything beyond the first page will have come from general revenue.
Aside from the, the court facility request is still back there as well for the, um, tree trimming. That one's a separate fund.
Boy, that's across your fingers budget. Is that what you said?
I guess. So you said again, this is the first page and you said that this is?
That, though, that's the TDC, uh, capital projects that are funded from the five cent bed tax.
Anything beyond that, this first page will?
Yep.
And I say, yes, wish the general revenue. Yeah?
Everybody done? Representative Grant, move, can we ride?